to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine O Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my, my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine O Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer.
Good evening, everyone. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and Happy New Year. Welcome back to our first council meeting of 2023. As always, I'll just acknowledge that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is indeed a privilege for us to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? There are none, can I motion to approve the agenda as circulated? So, councillor Tanner, seconded by councillor Colwell, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements? Are there any announcements from members of council? Anything upcoming? I don't know. Patrick, do you want to just say something really quick about the upcoming winter event?
Sure. We have a whole month of activities coming up in Bridgewater in February that we're branding as Winterlude, so we're going to be promoting stuff that both the town is programming, but also other community organizations as well, so folks can keep an eye on both our social media and the Explore Bridgewater website for that. We also have a two-day Frost Fair event on Saturday, the 11th, and Saturday, the 18th. We're going to have a vendor's market in downtown Bridgewater, some live music on site, and we encourage everyone to come on out and celebrate the town's 124th birthday in style, and also visit our local businesses while you're there.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from members of council? Time to start the meeting. We will move to staff introductions, and we'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development to introduce one of our new-ish staff members.
Yes. Good evening, council. It's my great pleasure to welcome Sujata Sajin as the town, to the town, as the Energized Bridgewater Project Coordinator. So Sujata actually joined the team on November 14th, so we were a little delayed in bringing her here to introduce you to her. Sujata is an ex-Indian Air Force officer who was fortunate to be part of the first cohort of women helicopter pilots inducted into the Indian Air Force. She retired from the Air Force in 2001 and started working in the civil aviation sector, holding various roles in administration and operations as well as flying. And the last job she held prior to moving to Canada was developing a flight school for training young pilots in Shirdi, India. And she worked as head of the program management office for the project and was involved in planning it from an idea through to execution. So she's lived most of her life in India before coming to Canada this year, and, you know, she enjoyed traveling with her parents throughout the country, and she's got to experience her first snow the other day, which was really exciting. So now she's beginning to experience all that Nova Scotia has to offer. Her husband is still in India, but hoping to join her here, and one of her sons is also here in the community with her. And we're really excited to have her here, putting her deep project management experience and skills to the Energized Bridgewater Project. So she is focused on the project tracking, reporting, and administration, and she's sitting with the rest of the Energized team up on the third floor, so we welcome you to drop by and get to know Sujata, as she and you'll see her more on the background of things as we progress through the Energized Project to the March 2026. Awesome. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I think I've met a few people that's sitting there, and for all of you who don't know, I'm Sujata Sajin, I'm from India. She's actually mostly covered most of my career profile, so there's nothing new to add there, but I would like to point out that I've been to Canada before, and this time, actually, I came in as a visitor, and somehow I felt I needed to stay. It felt like my sole country, you know? I connected, and I was looking for a job, and I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to be a part of Energized Bridgewater because I actually believe in the concept, and I'm working with a great team, and I hope to do a good job of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sujata. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have, oh, I'll ask if there are, there's a lot of people in the gallery, which is great to see. I'm going to make a little bit of an assumption that people are here most for the public hearing, but, and there will be a time for people to speak during the public hearing, if that's what you're here for. But if you're here for any other reason and wish to come to address council on any other topic other than the two items we have for the public hearing, which is 370 Jubilee or the 287 King Street, so if you're here for any other topic, you can come down and address council. See anyone jumping up? Okay, as I said, during the, during the public hearing, if, if there are members of the public that wish to address council, there will be a time for that. Moving along, we have the minutes of December 12th, 2022 council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions with those? There are none, can I motion to approve the minutes as circulated? Deputy Mayor Fugier, seconded by councillor Colwell, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Perfect. Thank you. So as per the municipal government act, I will now pause our council meeting and call to order our public hearing. I would like to note that all public participation, advertising, and statutory requirements have been met, and I'm going to outline a few general rules of contact, conduct for the hearing before we continue. Members of council may question each speaker. Speakers will be limited to one presentation, however, council may call upon a speaker for additional comments. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes each. Each speaker will state their name and address for the record, and questions from the floor will be directed to council, not to staff or other individuals. And you may, you must come to the podium to speak, thank you very much, because we are live streaming, so we want to make sure people at, at home can hear you. And the hearing will continue as follows. We'll start with an overview by the planner, followed by a presentation from the applicant, if they so choose. After that, I will ask any members of the public if they wish to make comments, starting with those in favor, then those opposed, then finally, any other comments. Then I will give closing remarks. We will close the public hearing, and we will return to our council meeting where this, while these items will be voted. So there's, there's two public hearings, we're going to open, close, and then open and close, and if you're as confused as I am, that is normal. I generally get thrown off at public hearings. So without further ado, I will turn it over to our planner, who will walk us through the first item, which is the Marshawn Developments Limited project and 370 Jubilee Road.
Thank you. So an application was submitted to develop a master-planned community at 370 Jubilee Road. The intent is to develop 886 units made up of townhouses and multi-unit residential buildings. The property is outlined here in red, and it is 36.85 acres. The property abuts Jubilee Road, Exhibition Drive, Dufferin Street, and West Mount Heights. It almost connects to McMack Avenue, but there is a parcel of private property in between, and you can see the municipal boundary showed in the yellow dotted line. So small parts of the property are outside of the town, but this development agreement is focused on what is inside the town. The lot is currently composed of a forested area, a water course, and a field. So the application is to construct 886 residential units. The applicants are proposing nine multi-unit buildings with a total of 822 units in those. They would range between 70 to 114 units per building and would be either five or six stories tall. They're also proposing nine townhouse buildings, and this would include 26 townhouse units and 38 stacked townhouse units. The development would be constructed in three separate phases. There's no proposed unit mix at this stage, and the applicant intends to determine the breakdown based on market conditions. Parkland dedication is required through subdivision bylaw, so an area of the property has been proposed to be maintained as natural area. So the property is zoned as comprehensive residential, or R3, in the land use bylaw. The land use bylaw permits 25 units per acre for the R3 zone by DA. The property is also designated as comprehensive residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy, and the surrounding uses of this property are single-unit dwellings, multi-unit residential dwellings, woodland gardens, the exhibition grounds, and various commercial uses along Dufferin Street. So this is the proposed site plan of the property. The developer is proposing two new public streets, one currently referenced as Street A. It would connect from the intersection of Jubilee Road down at the bottom here and, and up to West Mount Heights. And the other street, B, would extend from Street A over here, over towards McMack, but as I mentioned, there is a parcel of property in between, so there would be a turnaround. The town's design and construction standards requires local streets to have a sidewalk on one side, which is being proposed. Additionally, a mid-block crosswalk is being proposed, where the active transportation in the trail meets Exhibition Drive, it's across from Woodland Gardens. And this would be required unless deemed unsuitable by the traffic, the town engineer. The multi-unit buildings are located along Jubilee Road and Exhibition Drive, as well as some further up the proposed streets, and they're shown in the purple and yellowish buildings towards the top. The multi-units along Jubilee Road and Exhibition Drive are proposed to be six stories, and the others are proposed to be five stories. Although, I'll get into this later, the development agreement doesn't specify building heights for individual buildings, except to include a maximum. The townhouse units are shown clustered around here in red, and the stacked townhouse units in blue up there. The land use bylaw permits 25 units per acre on this property, and in this case results in a permitted, permits, sorry, 921 units, which is higher than the 886 units being included in the development agreement. No proposed designs have been completed for the building, as the applicants intend to review market conditions at the time of construction. As per the subdivision bylaw requirements for parkland, a park is being proposed in the area shown here in green. There's currently a water course that runs through it. They've also proposed an active transportation trail through the park to connect the two streets, and it would connect across the street from a trail connection, as mentioned, in Woodland Gardens. Jubilee Road and Exhibition Drive are collector streets, which intend to collect traffic from nearby local streets. With new development happening over the last few years on Jubilee Road, there have been concerns from residents about the amount of traffic on this street, but as it is a collector street, the intention is for it to keep, keep collecting traffic as development continues in the area. West Mount Heights and Centennial Street are local streets, which intend to accommodate low volumes of traffic and provide access to the majority of the building lots in an area. This is a proposed phasing plan of how the development would build out. I'm going to be referencing these phases when talking about the development agreement details later. So Phase 1 is shown in orange, like orangey-yellow, and includes the buildings along Jubilee Road and Exhibition Drive, as well as the parkland. Phase 2 is shown in purple and includes some townhouses and two of the multi-unit buildings. Phase 3 includes the street up towards McMack Avenue and stacked townhouses, as well as two multi-unit buildings as well. Each phase is planned to be constructed within 10 years, with a timeline of 30 years maximum. There are also sub-phases within each phase, as identified on the phasing plan by letters. The developer would have to construct the phases in order, but not those individual sub-phases. So a public participation meeting was held on March 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. It was held virtually, and 10 members of the public attended, as well as five people on behalf of the applicant. And the main points of discussion at the meeting were support for the parkland, question on the construction timeline, concern regarding resulting traffic on West Mount Heights, concern regarding stormwater management, concern for areas' current walkability and the increase in vehicular traffic, concern regarding existing right-of-way easement, and that has since been resolved since the PPM, concern town is not focusing on a big-picture approach to traffic, and a question about the ability to connect to McMack Avenue. So staff completed a policy analysis, which can be found in the report. The comprehensive residential, or R3, zone is focused on ensuring that most of the town's undeveloped lands outside the downtown core will support future residential development. As mentioned earlier, it permits multi-unit and collective residential development up to 25 units per acre. There were general and residential development policies that staff analyzed, and those included minimizing conflict between land uses, considering compatibility with adjacent properties, supporting a full range of housing options and styles, requiring amenity space, promoting residential densification, encouraging context-sensitive residential infill, and encouraging compact urban form and adaptive reuse. Some policies about open space and the environment were looked at, including integrating with appropriate landscaping, requiring a transfer of open space through subdivision, retaining existing trees, protecting water courses, and stormwater management. Policies regarding transportation included review the adequacy of the street network and active transportation infrastructure, require parking, require sidewalks and walkways, construct new streets to town standards, prohibit new cul-de-sacs and dead ends, and limit future residential street blocks. So more specifically for transportation, a traffic impact study was required, and that reviewed the existing transportation network and vehicular traffic, the number of new trips that would be generated by the development, and their estimated distribution into the network, and how these trips would affect the level of service of the transportation network. It also identified improvements that may be needed to lessen the impact of the development. Staff are aware that there are existing issues in this area. A 2021 intersection study and other analysis has been completed that may warrant improvements that are separate from this proposed development. And in this traffic impact study, it was identified that traffic signals should be installed at the intersection of High Street and Dufferin Street. However, this may be required in the coming years with typical traffic growth with the traffic generated by this development. Similarly, traffic lights were identified to be necessary at High Street and Dominion Street, and there is already an agreement in place for that work to be done with a separate development. A southbound left-turning lane and a northbound left-turning lane have been said to be warranted at the intersection of Dufferin Street and Centennial Avenue, and currently, no additional traffic coming from Centennial Avenue is proposed for the first phase of this development, as the street wouldn't connect yet, so the turning lane heading into Centennial wouldn't have to be constructed until later into the development, and it stated that the other turning lane would be associated with a separate development. Final confirmation of any required upgrades would be determined during the detailed design and permitting phase. Infrastructure was also analyzed. There are requirements that stormwater must be self-contained on the property, and that flows occurring after the development is completed cannot be more than what has already existed. A stormwater management plan was submitted for initial review, but a final one would be required to be approved prior to the issuance of development and building permits. The wastewater betterment charge bylaw would be applied, as with any other development, and a downstream analysis was also completed to understand if the physical infrastructure can support the proposed development, and it shows that infrastructure improvements will probably, probably be necessary, and this would be at the cost of the developer. So this is a complex and multi-phase development agreement, so I am going to go into details about what is included in the development agreement. It outlines a maximum of 886 residential units, and then a maximum of 822 of those would be in multi-unit dwellings on a minimum of a 35.44 acre parcel. Staff included a maximum number of multi-unit dwellings in the proposal to limit, to include a variety of unit types, so this gives the developer the flexibility to change their dwelling types in the future while keeping the multi-unit limited. And the minimum parcel size is, that's included in the DA, is smaller than the current parcel size, and that's included because if any of the parcel were to be subdivided, this amount would be the minimum area that's required to keep the area at the 25 units per acre permission of the R3 zone with the proposed unit count. The development agreement also states a minimum of 20% of the units in Phase 1 shall be two or more bedrooms, and the unit breakdown hasn't been determined yet, so staff would like to ensure that there is a certain amount of units that would be suitable for larger family units. The development agreement includes building characteristics for multi-unit dwellings and townhouses. These were in lieu of elevation drawings, which would normally be submitted for a development agreement, but because of the length of the development agreement, the developer was not completing detailed design of those buildings, as they want to base it off the market. So staff provided some urban design guidelines to maintain flexibility while encouraging engaging development. And the requirements for multi-units are, the maximum height would be six stories, the ground floor story would be at street-line grade, and this is included because there are steep slopes on the property, and staff wanted to avoid tall exposed foundations. All multi-unit dwellings shall include primary entrances on all facades oriented towards and abutting a public street, excluding some of the buildings. The excluded buildings are the two shown here in blue along Jubilee Road, and that's because the main entrances would be facing each other, the two buildings at the corner of Jubilee Road and Street A, and the one at the corner of Streets A and B, because they would only require entrances on Street A, not both streets. This would not remove the need for entrances along the street, though, because all, all ground floor units abutting a public street would need individual entrances facing that street. To ensure variation along the street, there would need to be varying vertical architecture, which means that, which means using different facade materials or projections to break up the length of a building. Windows and doors shall occupy no less than 25% of any facade, and the multi-units abutting a public street would need a minimum six-foot stepback at the base of the fourth story on the facades that are oriented towards the street. And as for building characteristics for townhouses, there would also be a requirement for varying vertical architecture, where units are separated by a common vertical wall, and garages could not project beyond front, beyond the front main wall of a dwelling. And these requirements are to help create a more walkable, welcoming environment along the street. The development agreement also outlines property characteristics. There would be a maximum front yard setback of 40 feet for multi-unit buildings, except for one building which is set back behind another, and this is to bring buildings closer to the street to create a more engaging street. And this is to bring buildings closer to the street, to create a more engaging street, while also considering distance requests from the developer. There would need to be paved pedestrian access adjacent to driveways for the multi-units, where it can be anticipated that people will be walking along the driveway to get to the building entrance. All multi-units would also need paved pedestrian access between the building and the parking lot, and between the main entrances and the adjacent street, to ensure a safe space for people to walk. There would also need to be paved pedestrian access connecting the upper units of one of the stacked townhouse buildings. The building is adjacent to Street A, so staff felt it's important to have direct access to the building, to increase connectivity, and again, to create a more engaging street. The plan is to build the site out in three phases, like I mentioned, over a maximum of 30 years. The development agreement outlines that each phase has to be complete within 10 years of starting that phase. So Phase One has to be complete within 10 years of the agreement. Phase Two has to be complete within 20 years, and Phase Three has to be complete within 30 years. Also, Phase Two and Three cannot begin until building permits are issued for the previous phase, to ensure they don't start all three phases at the same time. Street A, which is one, which is the one from Jubilee Road to West Mount Heights, has to be complete before Phase Two begins, and Street B before Phase Three begins. Phase One is mostly located on Exhibition Drive and Jubilee Road, so a new street isn't required for that phase. However, if any of the street is built, it can't exceed 107 meters without a secondary emergency access. The streets would also be conveyed to the town. And site preparation, except for what is needed for street construction, shall not occur until development permits are issued for that phase, and that's to try and stop land from being cleared too far in advance. Also, the parkland has to be complete before Phase Two is constructed. The section of the DA on streets states that they have to be constructed to the town's local street standards. Existing trees shall be retained when possible, and additional trees shall be planted along the street at maximum 30-foot intervals, unless otherwise approved by the development officer. Pedestrian ramps with tactile pavings have to be installed on sidewalks at intersections as well. For parkland, the 3.9 acres would need to be transferred to the town once complete, and also before Phase Two begins. A main trail through the park would be required, and it would be required prior to Phase Two. This is because the first three sub-phases would be adjacent or close to the existing forested area, so even if there's no trail yet, they would still, still have access to that space. There would be a trail required to connect the main trail to Street B once that street is constructed. Trails connecting the building in Phase One to the main trail would be required. A mid-block crosswalk would be required across Exhibition Drive, if approved by the town's traffic authority. And a 65-foot buffer would be required around the water course, as per policy. The DA specifies that a minimum of one vehicular parking space is required per one unit. This is less than what's required by the land use bylaw, but the developer believes this is in line with the market. The bicycle parking would be, as per the land use bylaw, at .5 spaces per one unit. And 50 to 90% of bicycle parking would need to be indoors. Stacked townhouses and townhouses may share driveway, driveways, with openings at a maximum of 80, oh, sorry, 30 feet wide. This is included because it varies from the town's standards, but still limits the opening at the street or sidewalk. As discussed earlier, street improvements may be required based on the traffic impact study. So the development agreement references the study and requires an updated study before Phase Two, which is when Street A would connect to West Mount Heights. Any improvements required from the development would be the responsibility of the property owner. For servicing, a comprehensive design report would be required prior to any work beginning. And additionally, detailed submissions for building services would be required prior to permit issuance for each building. Adequate fire protection would be required. A downstream wastewater capacity assessment was submitted, and any improvements to the town's infrastructure due to the development would be the responsibility of the property owner. Since the timeline of the DA is long, it states that the assessment may be amended based on changing infrastructure conditions. And this is because the capacity issues today may be different than those for later phases. So issues could be exacerbated if other development happens in that area, or the issues could be improved if the town upgrades that information, infrastructure in the meantime. Also, the DA states that if provincial wastewater regulations change between years 20 and 30 of the development, additional contribution from the developer would be required. And this is because the town doesn't know what the regulations will be coming from Nova Scotia Environment 20 years from now, and we don't want to put ourselves in a place that will limit us from adhering to their requirements. There is no guarantee these changes would occur, though, so a contribution may not be required. A preliminary review of a stormwater management plan has been completed, but a detailed stormwater management, management report, including a grading plan, would be required, as well as additional plans for every sub-phase, prior to permits for that sub-phase. And this is to ensure that stormwater management is always up to date and specific for such a large area. A stormwater pond or similar facility would be required, and it would have to be complete prior to Phase One C. And this is because before that, the buildings are planned to connect directly to the existing water course. And as mentioned earlier, all post-development peak stormwater runoff flows must be equal to or less than what exists now. Finally, there are some additional clauses, including amenity space, landscaping plans, solid waste, light, lighting and maintenance. There's one substantive clause, which is the permitted number of units on 35.44 acres. Also, there's a partial discharge clause to account for the long timeline of the DA. So if Phase Two or Three are not complete within the allotted timelines, council can partially discharge the agreement. So staff recommend that council give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement, and enter into the development agreement regarding the property at 370 Jubilee Road.
Great. Thank you very much, Mackenzie. Are there any questions from members of council on this? Councilor McDonald?
I think I asked you this last time, but I didn't, I didn't note your response. So the, the timeline of the DA is, is pretty long, and we don't do partial discharges at this point. What would happen if plans changed, or they decided not to proceed with development any further beyond state, Phase One?
Right, so we could then, since there's the partial discharge clause, council would be able to make the decision if they didn't adhere to that timeline of Phases Two and Three. If it, if Phase Two was not complete within 20 years, then council has the ability to retain what has been constructed and that part of the development agreement, but can discharge the rest of the proposed units.
Great, thanks.
Other questions?
Excuse me, where is the stormwater pond expected to be installed or, or placed?
Yeah, I can show you. It's, I don't know if it's actually shown on here, but it's, gonna be right down there. Just kind of, I'll, near the property line in the, in the parkland.
Okay, and that is contained?
Yeah, it will be contained. So there, there was a preliminary stormwater plan that was reviewed, but the detailed review will, will be done later before permitting. But the intent is to capture it in that stormwater pond.
And so part two, related to wastewater. So infrastructure improvements may be necessary to accommodate the develop, the development. How do you determine that when there's so much development on Jubilee already? That's still in progress?
Yes, I'm not an engineer, so I might not be able to speak perfectly to that question. They do some calculations, you guys might be able to respond to this better when it's your turn, based on projected flows. It's, it's all, it's theoretical. They look at theoretical flows, they can't ever know exactly what's gonna happen. So they base it on development that exists, and just the information that we know about our pipes and our flows. And they do calculations to determine it that way. Yeah.
Other questions from Councilor Cole?
Uh, excuse me, there are, excuse me, four phases in Phase One. Would those four lots be cleared individually, or all at once?
Uh, individually, sir, I'm just trying to find the, phase plan. Yeah, so it would be done individually, so I'm just going to double-check. So it's for the phase, so we didn't specify sub-phase. So site preparation, except for any trail development, and outside anything for the proposed street right-of-ways, shall not occur until development permits are issued for the associated phase. So it's not looking at the individual sub-phases, it's looking at those, like, three separate phases.
I think I saw a nod over there that they will be, they will be done individually. Yeah, that, that's, that would be great. And the other thing is, so there is something in the agreement about retaining trees where possible. Can you expand on that, or do we have any assurances that that will happen?
So we don't have assurances, because there's nothing in our policy that is about specific tree retention, so we can't put anything explicit in the development agreement. That's why that is not necessarily a direct requirement, more of a nudge in that direction. But they are required to submit grading plans, which would look at tree retention. So that's something that is looked at. We just don't have any rules to say what actually has to be maintained, so we're trying to capture it in a few different ways with those grading plans, so we can see what they are planning to do. And then with the, the site preparation as well, just like holding off until they need to clear trees.
It sounds like everybody's on the same page with, we'd like to see trees retained where possible, okay?
Other questions, Councilor Thurber?
Just one, and you've probably already answered it, but I hate dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, and I see one there. Is there any way that we can talk to the individual, extend McMack to join that, to help release in the traffic flow? Is there any possibility that a agreement could be reached with the landowner that owns that?
So I'll speak from my perspective, and then you folks can talk about it if you want after. So there's nothing in this development agreement that's requiring it, just because we, we can't do that. So the, the intent is that that street is there, because ideally it will connect to McMack Avenue in the future. Hence, the traffic authorities in trust and saying okay to a turnaround, which is not normally permitted, but because there is that possibility of attaching later. But it would very much be like a civil matter, something that the developer would have to have that conversation with the landowner, and they would have to be willing to do it.
Okay, great, thank you. And just further to that, that being the third phase, you're looking at the 20 to 30-year timeline for that, right? So lots of change. Other questions from members of council? I'm so glad you asked the tree question. Just for the benefit of the applicant, we've watched many a lot be fully cleared long before development's taken place, and it gets frustrating when the shall-retain trees ends up being, we left a tree. So I appreciate the nod, just clearing everything. Any other questions for Mackenzie? All right, so the applicant can make a presentation if they so choose. Come to the podium and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Hello everyone, members of council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Marquise, I'm a planning consultant with Zap Consulting. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
As I mentioned, my name is Chris Marquise, I'm a planning consultant with Zap Consulting, here representing our client, Marshand Developments. With me here today is my colleague Greg Swicker, and representatives from Marshand Developments, Trevor Adams and Jeff Marshand, by the namesake. Kevin Marshand, who wished, could have been here with us today, was unfortunately had another matter to attend to and was unable to make it, but sends that to his well wishes as well, so. So I just want to give you a bit of a rundown of who Marshand Developments is. Predominantly, we're in home building for the last couple decades. As Marshand Homes, so a long track record of building communities, the single-family homes. In the recent past, started to get into multi-unit residential development, and have some projects in both Halifax and, and starting up actually pretty soon in Truro as well. So, so have some history with, with doing this kind of element and community building over time. And then, so why now? So why in Bridgewater with this development now? Well, in the last five years, Bridgewater's population has grown 8%. There's recent statistics by Statistics Canada, has seen this massive growth, particularly in the last year, year two. But yeah, 8% in the last, last five years. And the, and, you know, an older report from the South Shore Housing Association said that 45% of the aging population is looking to downsize in the town of Bridgewater, and there aren't those units available right now. The vacancy rate in the town is, well, at the time, in 2020, when that statistic was pulled, was 1.5%. I imagine it's much lower now, given the recent population boom. So the, the housing composition in town doesn't match the current need. And, and that's really what we're trying to go for here. So the vision for this development is really focused on a few things. So the first one is a mix of housing typologies, so townhouses, stacked townhouses, multi-units. Mackenzie went over kind of the more details of this, I'll keep it at a pretty high level, I don't want to repeat the same things that she, that she said. But having these, these different mixes of housing typologies allow for people to age in place. They can, they can keep in their community, you know, maybe go into a townhouse, and then as they get older, maybe their needs change, they don't need, need less space, they can go to a stacked townhouse, and then into a multi-unit. And they can keep sorting through and, and kind of leaving new spaces open for people that need them. It matches, the intent is to match units with the people who need them, and the size of units and type of unit that they need them. So the one, the other kind of core, core vision for this, this development is sustainable transportation. So looking at the Bridgewater Transit Service along Jubilee and Exhibition Drive, and we see this as maybe there's an opportunity to bring transit service into this community as kind of an extension to that, or being able to access it off of, off of Exhibition Drive, but really focusing more on sustainable transportation with this development, asking for kind of the reduction in parking, parking minimums as well, and then after transportation. So there's the sidewalks along, along the new roads, and the connection, proposed AT infrastructure on Exhibition Drive and Jubilee Road, as well as kind of through Woodland Gardens with the, the trail system there. And that brings me into that third pillar here, is the parkland, really extension, really, you know, important part of this development is the extension of Woodland Gardens. Keep that trail very, that parkland and, and trail system very naturalized, maintain the trees there, and just providing this kind of wooded escape, and kind of, you know, just tranquil ability to have, to have some space there. So as part of the, the concept, as Mackenzie said, you know, it's 800, about 880 units, mix of multi-unit residential, townhouse and stacked townhouse. And I don't know if Mackenzie mentioned, but a stacked townhouse is just a town, two, two townhouse units, one on top of each other. Because of the grade on the site, it actually is possible that both have grade entrances, one from the back and one from the front, because the upper two units might be on the higher end of the slope, or the upper, upper units might be on the higher end of the slope, the lower units on the lower end of the slope, so they can get right off to the street to, to their driveway right off from grade. So that's great from an accessibility perspective as well, being able to have those, those kinds of units that, that can be ground-based and accessible as well, so. And as Mackenzie mentioned, it's, it's a phased project, this is not all happening at once. It, this is gonna be a 15- to 20-year build-out. You know, depending on the market conditions, if Bridgewater's population keeps growing, then it may be quicker, if it slows down, it might be a bit slower. But it's, it's hard to gauge on the full build-out for something like this today. You know, we're not, nobody here is a fortune teller, but we expect a 15- to 20-year build-out. And anticipating start date of Phase One is late 2023, kind of early 2024. Working through the detailed design and getting all the, all the additional reports from stormwater management and, and grading and, and all those sorts of things, and infrastructure, all done prior to the construction of Phase One. So there's a bit of time in between now, but we, we expect Phase One to start kind of late 2023, early 2024. And that, and that kind of Phase 1A, I believe, or maybe, maybe Phase 1B, but one of those two, one of those two spaces there. And some of the things we considered as part of this application was, so traffic was one of them. We looked at the, you know, where, where the traffic generation would be, main access off of Jubilee Road, secondary access off of West Mount Heights. We'd love to connect to McMack, well, or McMack, on the McMillan Street. And, and you know, it may be a possibility in the future, but we are, it's unfortunately out of our hands with a different property owner there, so. But again, as that being a later phase of the development, it is a possibility in the future as, as time goes on. And if that property owner is open to that discussion, I think it's something that we can work with the town to, to figure out. As, as far as traffic impact, there was a traffic impact study that was done. Mackenzie did a great job of explaining that, I won't, I won't kind of go into too much detail there. But beyond, you know, the traffic that's generated from, from background generation as other developments happen in, in the community, it'll, we're, our client's responsibility to, to upgrade those, that system as needed over time. But again, it is, it is a 15- to 20-year build-out, so not everything's happening at once. You're not getting 160, 180 units all at once. It'll be slow, phased, as you go through. And one of the things we really considered of was, was parking. So there's a combination of underground and service parking. Topography of the, of the site kind of lends itself well to having some underground parking. Keeping the parking ratio of one-to-one for the townhouses, that's something that we've experienced in other markets, that that's really desired. But a parking ratio of one-to-one for multi-units as well, and that's something that we're seeing a lot more of, that as people kind of move in, don't necessarily have two cars, maybe share one car, don't necessarily need two cars. And as, over time, we're seeing a trend in tenants and, and, and home, people living in their homes, reducing their need for, for cars and for parking. And so one of the things that we'd like to, we were kind of included as part of this, as developed, we wanted to include as part of this development agreement is the ability for you, council, to, to look at this in the future as well. To, you know, depending on market conditions and depending on the transportation system that exists in the future, in the next 20, 30-year timeframe, maybe that parking ratio can come down, depending on, on what happens. So if we get to, you know, if we're all teleported in 20 years, that'd be great. We don't need parking anymore, so. So, you know, the last piece here was around energy and energy efficiency and reduction in energy consumption. And one of the things that Marshan Homes does with every project is an energy model, and we plan to do that for each of these buildings here as well. And we look forward to working with the Energize Bridgewater team and Efficiency Nova Scotia to implement some energy efficiency solutions in the design, construction, and operations of these units and buildings. Well, thank you. That's all I have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Questions from council? Pretty good overview. All right. It's always on a swivel. All right, no, great, thank you for that.
Great, thanks a lot.
So, that is the, there's no one else from the, you guys aren't making the presentation? Okay. So, then I will now move to members of the public. So, as I stated earlier, we kind of go in a little bit of an order. So, if there are any members of the public that wish to make comment in favor of the proposal, I would ask that you come down to the podium and introduce yourselves. Okay. And if there are, oh, yep.
I am actually the owner of 287, so I'm next up on your docket. But I did not know that this was going to be coming up today, but I happen to know Marshon Homes. I'm also a Realtor, and I wanted to let you know, I've been a Realtor for 11 years. I've never worked for them, okay? So, I'm not speaking on their behalf because I've worked for them. But within our industry, of course, there's many different developers and builders and everything that you work with. And I would say, within industry, Marshon would be known as one of the best, really. And when I say best, I mean the best as far as reputation, right? You know, so with some, when you deal with some developers and builders, you don't know what you're getting, you don't know if they're going to follow through exactly with the DA as planned, you know, your comment about the trees and such. But really, as an agent that has to deal with these builders and developers, they are the, they're the builders that we don't have problems with. They're the ones that you would want to buy your home from as far as quality, as far as development, and all that type of stuff is considered. I just so happened to be here, I didn't plan on speaking here, but I thought I would because I know it's difficult to know when you're dealing with a developer exactly what you're going to get, once you have that paperwork done, right? So, I've been doing this for 11 years, never heard a negative thing about them, only positive things within my industry about their quality of work.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak in favor? Okay, so then I'll move on if there, oh, you, did you want to address those now?
Yeah, are you moving on to that?
Well, we have.
Yeah, we have to read them.
First?
Before you close, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I can do it now, or I can do it after the people, after the people speak?
Sure.
Okay. If you've watched a public hearing in town of Bridgewater before, you would know it. This is not unusual. I have my cheat sheet filed by another cheat sheet to help me get through, do this. Yeah, so we do have some, we'll address it after. We do have some correspondence that we received late, which we will read, so the public has a chance to hear it, but we'll do that after. I invite any members of the public that wish to make comment opposed to the project. I would ask that you come to the podium and introduce yourselves. Yeah, come on down, please.
Hi, I'm Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rob Livzig. I live at 28 Sunset Drive. I guess I'm not so much opposed, I really am looking forward to some development in Bridgewater for those who are looking to either move here or seek housing they may have never had before. But I just, I'm concerned because I haven't been presented enough information about the traffic impact study. So, I mean, you may have a report, but I don't and I haven't seen it. And I guess I have concerns about the broader network. I mentioned that the first time around in the public forum. But I guess partially I'm concerned because I hear different timeframes for the development, whether it's 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. At times, it's 10 to 20 years. We just, I guess, I've only been privy to the start date, which is 2023, 2024. But it would make sense that, and now maybe you know this already, but when exactly are these phases going to be introduced? Because that would impact your demand scenario in the future. So, the people who are assessing the traffic impact, you'd have to know what sort of background model they have for the town of Bridgewater, how that projects over time, what sort of demand levels you have in five, 10, 15-year increments, what that background model looks like. And then, you know, to measure the impact of this assessment, you would look at the additional demand brought on by this proposal, along with all the other proposals you have. So, at the time, I guess it was earlier, it was last year, I suggested a, something with a bit more higher fidelity, because I asked the question, what sort of analysis do you do? And it was basically the static analysis, you know, how many turns can an intersection accommodate, and this and that. Yeah, roads are capable of heaps and heaps of traffic, right? Thousands of vehicles on a straightforward road. But then you look at your level of service, right? So, I'm sorry I'm jumping around, but I didn't prepare that presentation.
No, it's okay.
So, today, we enjoy a level of service properly, A, on the roads today. You know, it's a small town, growing all the time. During busy periods, you might get a level of service C, or even D. During construction, it's a fail. We experienced that before Christmas. So, what I'm wondering as a resident, how are my roads going to look like in five, 10, 15 years' time, from a base model? And then, adding a thousand more residents to that network, what impact is that going to have? Not just on the immediate roads, because all those vehicles will easily be able to turn left and right and come in. But how does that impact the intersections, and where are they going? Are they going to the shopping centers, the employment networks? How does that network look in the future, and how does this impact that? So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, without further information, I don't really want to support the development based on the lack of information about the traffic.
Thank you for your comments. Can we be able to address some of the traffic?
The development agreement did require that there be a traffic impact analysis done. It also requires that that be refreshed as development occurs and as phasing occurs as well. So, there may be development that occurs in the area that we don't anticipate now that could impact the outcome of what was studied in 2023. And so, the development agreement will require that that be updated as conditions warrant for Engineering or Traffic Authority to determine what upgrades would be required based on what's occurring in the area and in the town in the future, not just 2023. So, it's not kind of casting that in stone, but recognizing that things will change, and it'll warrant that change in the study and any upgrades that may be required. I don't know, did I cover that?
I have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple things, so that address a few things. So, a traffic impact study was completed, and it did look at a few different things. So, you're right, it looked at like the background modeling, any additional demand from this and other developments in the area, because there are some other developments kind of happening around there. Level of service was looked at. It was also looked at in our, the town's intersection study that was done in 2021. So, they kind of, that intersection study really pointed out some of the areas around town that were at a lower level of service than was ideal. And so, for this, I'll say, the traffic impact study was, I guess you could say, approved in theory, just to move on for the next phase, which is the development agreement. And it will be needing to be approved again prior to any permits. And then, like, it was said that it will be looked at again before the connection to Westmount, so around Phase Two. And then, I just wanted to address, too, that the way that the town currently works with traffic for development agreements is that it's the developer's responsibility to look at that kind of closer network. There might be instances where they have to look, explore a little further, depending on the connections or something, but it is really focused on that area, though. So, they looked a little bit outside of town as well and down towards the Highland Dominion. But then, it would be on the town's responsibility to then kind of keep up with that and do a larger work if it's affecting other areas of town. And then, it's kind of a developer focusing on the small area for this. Yeah.
Thank you very much, McKenzie. Yeah, so, I didn't realize, so there's a level, a traffic impact study prepared by the developer, which is more closing, and then it's up to the town's traffic engineers to study the knock-on impact throughout town. So, I'm experienced in using more sophisticated modeling, like Transox Solutions type of modeling that models the entire network of roads. I would think that, in terms of budgeting, in terms of being able to do the necessary improvements in time, so we don't hit the fail, and, you know, when we should be constantly at level of service, whatever your mandate is, or what you've decided on. If you want to keep the roads at level of service B or better, right? Then you want to know what improvements you're going to make and when. So, by knowing when the development is going to come into play and by forecasting the traffic in the area, you would be able to have a 20-year timeline of which improvements need doing and when, rather than waiting to see how it goes and then assessing it as you go. It's not really, that's not really planning, that's sort of knee-jerk reaction. So, I would suggest you build a model, sorry, I was being strong. If you had a base model of the town, right, and you go out with the students and you check to make sure that that's relatively accurate. So, you have a computer simulation model that has all the traffic coming and going at your AM and PM, PM peak periods. Make sure that's adequate. Come up with some assumptions and projections for that future track in five- and 10- and 15-year increments. Feed in what additional developments are going to happen and when. And then, you can say, you know, in 10 years' time, we're going to need these four intersections, and it's a massive amount of work. Put it in the budget and make sure you do it three years prior. So, we maintain that level of service B, or whatever it is you want, level of service. So, that's why I have a hard time with the, one, I haven't seen any of the assumptions, any of the projections, any of the demand scenarios, either for the town or for the, or from the developer in terms of time, so that that can be adequately assessed. So, those are my concerns. It's mostly virtual.
I appreciate you sharing those and sharing some of your wisdom there. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak opposed? Or are there any members of the public that just wish to speak in general about this project? So, if you want to come down to the, yeah, perfect.
Hi, I'm Chavon Doyle, and I live on Pycris Boulevard in Bridgewater. Super happy to hear about Energize Bridgewater's connection with the new project. That's lovely and exciting. Love to hear about the green space. I walk that trail in Woodland Gardens all the time, so that's going to be a nice little addition for my neighborhood. I am a little curious, I wasn't clear on how many units in the development are intended to be as rental units, or whether some of them are intended to be purchases, or some rental units, what the percentage is going to be. And my only concerns were that there are, excuse me, so many people in Bridgewater and on the South Shore who are experiencing housing vulnerabilities. And I wasn't sure whether the development agreement would be the place where you could encourage, if not mandate, that the developers allow for a certain percentage or portion of rental units be earmarked for their at least willingness to speak with local agencies such as South Shore Open Doors Association to see if they could support more people with vulnerable housing issues. That's it.
I don't think, I don't know if anyone can speak to that? Yeah?
Yeah, not too much to say on that. Rental versus ownership would be up to the developers. And then, for affordable housing, I know you didn't use that word, but I gather that's what you're talking about. The currently used by law and municipal planning strategy don't have requirements for affordable housing, except for in a case where a developer would like to increase their density by 20%. Then, now, actually, based on some recent changes, then 100% of those units would have to be affordable. In this case, they are actually below their density permissions, so that didn't come into play for this. Other than that, there's nothing in our documents currently. All the staff are working on affordable housing amendments that would require any of that. So, it would be up to the developer to do that if they wanted to.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this topic? Okay. So, I'll just give my closing remarks and then close the public hearing. As I said, oh, yes, you have to, yeah, I forget, yes. Can you please read the correspondence that we got?
Okay. So, we just received some correspondence, written submissions in response to the proposed development, and they've been requested to be read at the public hearing. So, the first is from Sarah, I'm going to pronounce it wrong, but Village Claus. And essentially, it's along with the theme of affordable housing. Her comments are that she wants to express her sincere hope that the Jubilee development will include affordable units. Think it's great that some higher-density housing will soon be available. However, I'm worried that it will not be affordable for many people. Are there requirements for the developer to plan affordable units? If currently not required, will the town of Bridgewater ensure before finalizing the development agreement that affordable units, and a significant number of them, will be built as part of this project? It would also be great if these units were the first to be completed. Thank you for considering my concerns and bringing them forward. I believe McKenzie's already addressed that. The second submission received this afternoon was from John Sutton. And his comments are, "I have a question, comment regarding the 370 Jubilee Road development that I would appreciate getting read at the public hearing meeting this evening. We unfortunately are unable to attend the meeting in person, but will be watching online. We own property located at 15015 Route 3. Both of these properties border the proposed development. We have had issues with water and erosion emanating from the top of the hill, which is within the development's property lines. We have just spent approximately $10,000 with another $10,000 to $15,000 still to go trying to mitigate the damage to our property. We are concerned that the 95-unit building in particular, at the top of the hill behind our property, will make the situation worse. What assurances do we have that this will not occur? Does the development agreement provide oversight to protect us?" McKenzie can address that, too?
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so just quickly, just there is, there are a few stormwater management clauses that intend to focus on that. So, one being a detailed stormwater management report, including a comprehensive grading plan, has to be submitted and approved prior to the issuance of any development permits. And then, after that, there needs to be subsequent stormwater management plans for each sub-phase. So, those are the smaller ones within the phase, and that's prior to the issuance of any development permits for that sub-phase. So, it is looking at a detailed level as well as the overall level. And then, one of the requirements is that any post-development peak stormwater runoff flows are equal to or less than pre-development stormwater peak runoff flows. So, it just can't make an existing situation worse. And the stormwater plan has been looked at generally prior to this, but does require that thorough work before the permitting process.
Thank you, perfect. Okay, so, just before we close, let me just thank the people that spoke. I know it's never easy to come before council and, oh, did? Sure, yeah, if you want to come down.
Can you hear me well?
Yep.
I just want to address some of the questions about affordable units and our plans for rental units and units for sale. Our intentions are absolutely to provide some affordable units. We want to try to hit all areas of the market that we possibly can and provide units, you know, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, stacked townhomes, townhomes. We likely will be selling off some of the stacked townhomes, townhome units. The multi-res sites, our intentions are to build and hold those. We're very excited about that. And there will be affordable units included. On Building One, I can't say for now, but we will be working with CMHC. And in those programs, that's for financing, in those programs, we will be working with modeling our buildings for energy efficiency, as Chris mentioned, and affordable unit options as well. So we absolutely will be looking at that. So outside of the stacked townhomes and townhomes, we don't have plans in building any condo buildings or anything like that. If the market is there, we will absolutely consider it. So we will see, you know, where the market goes over the next, you know, decade or two. But our intentions are to build multi-res apartments, which I think is a great fit for the, for the town. I think that answers all the questions.
Okay, thank you. So again, I just want to thank those who came to speak. As I said, it is, it is not always easy to, you know, it's a full gallery, you've got council and staff and cameras. So I appreciate you taking the time to not just come out but to speak. And for those who came in person and those who are watching online and sent in questions and comments, I, most if not all have been addressed. And those that haven't been addressed, certainly there's been information for us to look at. As I said, this is early stages, right? There's no, permits haven't been issued. There's still work to, work to do and some of these things can be incorporated in that. So, and for one final reminder before we adjourn the public hearing and rise back for council is that there is a 14-day appeal period for the public and the applicant for the, whatever the decision is of council. So, but no further ado, I will adjourn this public hearing and return to council and ask if someone is prepared to make a motion. Counselor Thorburn, please, thank you.
I would move that counsel for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement and enter into the development agreement regarding the property located at 370 Jubilee Road in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated January the 16th, 2023, as shown in Appendix A of Document 22-029B, and further that the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute the development and any other requirement instructions only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should this document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider any request to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required by the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin. Discussion, comments? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you again for everyone who came, to our applicants and staff. So we will now move on to our second public hearing. So second reading for the development grant for 287 King Street. So again, I will pause the council meeting and call the public hearing to order. All the statutory requirements have been met and I'll turn it over to staff.
Another development agreement, but an entirely different one. This one is a non-residential development agreement, a little bit smaller as well. So we can see the parcel of land there. It's on, located at 287 King Street, at the corner of what was Cornwall's, but in that Crescent Street. The building faces King Street and was formerly the Cobbler's Corners. It's very close to the lot lines, as you can see. So, right, especially on that side right there, it's quite close. As a result, some of their options for the site are limited. So there's a picture from the front. As you can see, there's a fence close to the property line as well as some vegetation, but the front parking lot is poorly defined. So you can see in the side of the shop is the fire hydrant and the lot line roughly goes in front like that. So it's actually set quite a bit back from the street. So it's a change of use, looking at changing from a, sorry, Cobbler's to a retail and personal service shop. The personal service shop that's proposed is the Golden Apothecary, a community-based wellness store. There are no other significant exterior changes to the building. The zoning is currently C8, special commercial. As council may remember, there's, C8 is an interesting zone. It has a number of restrictions on it that can make the landowner, make it more complicated for them to pursue development agreements and pursue development permits. So we are looking at, for in this case, a development agreement to expand those uses quite a bit. So the site, as I mentioned, is small, 43,000 square feet with an existing roughly 16,000, 1600 square foot building. Under the proposed, under the land use bylaw, normally we're looking at five vehicle parking stalls, but given the constrained site, we're actually only looking at four, there would also be two bicycle stalls required. There was a public participation meeting on October 12th. There was no, no one registered and to date, there has been no public input on this development agreement at all. In a lot of ways, this development agreement is quite a bit simpler than the previous one. We're really talking about the permitted uses, looking at landscaping, buffering, lighting, and parking and access. I draw attention to the permitted use because we are expanding the permitted use to include broadly retail. So this isn't specific like before. Previously, we said it's retail, but specifically a cobbler. We are now saying it's retail more broadly. That is at the request of the applicant and enables flexibility for in future. If there were changes, we would not have to reopen the development agreement to change it from an apothecary to another use. As I mentioned, the landscape buffering and lighting, there were, it's limited what we can do because of the existing site and how constrained it is. Same with the parking and access, the parking access off of King Street in particularly would be challenging to redo. So we'll quickly run through some of the policies. Policy G9 ensures that all developments and site of plans have adequate automobile and parking. So as I mentioned, we are re-bearing the parking down by one vehicular stall, but keeping the bike parking. Next up, we look at the parking lot requirements and the design standards. Again, because the site is relatively small and the front parking lot is open to King Street, there's a limited amount that could be done without significant changes to the overall site. As a result, we're not proposing any changes or requiring any changes at this time. Should there be any changes to the front parking lot to include landscaping or whatnot, those would need to come up with standard in our parking lot standards in keeping with the land use bylaw. So I mentioned that we've expanded the uses, so personal service shops and a retail service shop are will be permitted through this development agreement. We are in compliance with the commercial development agreement policies, there will be no outdoor expand, outdoor storage. It's entirely non-residential currently and there are no proposed new structures or new projections or signage that is not in keeping with the bylaw. And so I recommend that council for the town of Bridgewater get second and final consideration to the draft development agreement. And I will turn it over to Maggie, if you'd like to make any comments.
Does council have any questions of the, like, oh, sorry.
Just one, if I remember that correctly, you can also turn on Crescent Street from that building?
That's correct.
Because the road's right next to that, right? So you could go on King or you could go on Crescent.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
It's kind of hard to go after that last application. I just, I want to introduce myself. I'm Maggie. I am a realtor, as I mentioned before, that was a big coincidence. But I, I have a property here in, on Highway 331 and my intention is, as my kids get older, to be down here permanently. So it's a part-time property for me. And I, in showing properties, came upon this one and decided that I wanted to do this venture. It is something that I think is needed, it's going to be wellness. We'll work with some of the, you know, the current businesses that are here, River Roots or Harmony Health or what have you. My goal is to have, you know, have an herbalist there, have different preventative health measures, as well as some health household goods and things like that. I don't want to change, I know it's a difficult lot, I don't want to change or add to any of the traffic, but I want to support the community. We know our healthcare system is not the greatest around here. So anything that can help, help others with preventative health and things that are not costly and what have you that they can do on their own, that's my ultimate goal. And, you know, especially with the aging community and the growing community that's here. That, that's really it, it's a simple little spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this? No, all right. I don't have any closing remarks, other than to say thanks for speaking and addressing council. And this is a challenging zone, we know that. I'm glad to see this, this transition, so that's great. So I will now close the public hearing and we will return back to council and I will look for a motion from a member of council, please. Counselor Conklin.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at 287 King Street, PIB 60033107, in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated January 16, 2023, and presented in Document 22-148B, and that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to execute this agreement and any other required instruments only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider any requests to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process as required by the Municipal Government Act.
Do I have a second or? Deputy Mayor Fager, further comments?
Question.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. And just again, remind folks that there's a 14-day appeal period for the applicant and the public. Thank you. Smaller, but no less important. So moving on, we have correspondence for information. We had a really request for the town to bid on the Nova Scotia 55+ Games for 2025. I think in the past, we have not done this alone. We've partnered with our municipal neighbors. I think one suggestion that came up was perhaps referring it to the LCLC board to work on that together with our municipal partner, MODL, as well as the LCLC. But council can choose to, to do something else if they wish. Counselor Tanner?
So did the LCLC letter come after the January 2nd letter?
I believe so.
Saying they'd like to host it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
There was no date on this.
No, so it's kind of a natural. So if, if council wishes, we could have a motion to refer this, the, the request for the 2025 Nova Scotia 55+ Games to the LCLC board.
Yeah, I'll make a, your worship, I'll make a motion to refer this for discussion to the LCLC board to discuss the Nova Scotia 55 Games Society bid for 2025.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion?
I'm just curious why we would need to do that if the LCLC general manager's already responded saying they'd like to host.
Just to, to give a response from the town.
Yeah, okay.
We will advise them that that's where we've referred it.
Okay, this becomes our official answer.
Understood.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. I don't know if we, we just did agenda planning today for the LCLC, so I don't know if this is on this week's agenda, but if not, well, I'll send that to Kent and we'll make sure that's put on there. 8.2, we have a letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing giving 12-month notice on construction demolition debris regulation guideline changes.
So it's primarily to ban pressure-treated wood from CND sites. So it involves another source and it involves landfilling as opposed to handling it the way we would receive wood now, where it may be chipped, it may end up in a CND landfill, but it's not, it's not landfilled. So there will be an impact to municipal units that process that waste or receive that waste, because I'd say it's another source that has to be done to remove it. And then there's a different cost for landfilling than there is for CND or woodchipping. So the Joint Services Board is aware of this. Our, our Chief Operating Officer, Leslie McFarlane, has already drafted correspondence and addressing some of the concern, because there will be a slight impact financially to department units as resulting from the, our, the Wounded Brook County Recycling Center having to handle that waste in a different way than they do now and pay a different tip fee to have it treated or processed. This is just, they're required to give 12 months notice anytime there's a financial impact of a regulatory change to municipalities. So it's a heads up that it's coming. And we'll see it next year.
Counselor Thorburn?
Just for clarification, Tam, when that first came up to Region 6, it was not moved pressure wood, treated wood, but now it's just manufactured. It has to be done pressure-treated by the manufacturer. You just don't go buy some Pentox and put it on a board. That's not pressure-treated.
Right, it's the legit, like, pressure-treated.
Pressure-treated by the manufacturer and it's stamped onto it, so.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Other questions? So really, this will be on the MGSB agenda.
Yep, it is.
And this, like I said, this is 12-month notice, which is what we get typically from the minister when there's changes coming. Moving down to correspondence for action, we have a letter from the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force regarding the regional anti-racism coordinator and really the regional anti-racism committee in general. So I can update council and the, the public that, you know, and in response to this letter from the, from our task force is, I think they're a little frustrated that last year we talked about a regional committee and we seem to not be there yet. I will tell you, it has nothing to do with a lack of municipal cooperation, so all the municipalities have had regular conversations about moving this forward. So we're hoping that on Wednesday, the mayor's wardens of the five municipalities are meeting and will review the terms of reference. Those would come back to each of the councils for review and hopefully we will be moving this forward soon thereafter. The delay has been somewhat frustrating, but I do, I do want to reiterate that it's not due to any kind of political bickering or political infighting, the five municipalities are very much together on this. So it's just taken a little bit longer than we wanted. Hopefully, there'll be another update very soon.
Very soon.
So, and then council will receive the terms of references, the, the terms of reference for the new regional committee and will discuss those here, as will each municipality. And then from there, hopefully form the regional committee with a staff person. Any questions? That, okay, thank you. Next, we have, under Reports and Recommendations, RFP 202212, self-contained breathing apparatus and components. So as you recall, we kind of, we have a special council meeting. Yeah, we have a special council meeting. Couldn't remember if it was a special council meeting or just regular council meeting. Special council meeting to deal with the approval of this, to head off any price increase. And so just an update from the CAO.
Yep, and the motion was to authorize myself to award the proposal, as long as it fell within budget, to the highest value or the best value proposal. So the report just notes that we had five proposals submitted and shows you the scoring and evaluation criteria that was used. And the proposal was awarded to Cummings Fire and Safety and it was awarded within budget.
Any questions? Okay, 10.2, recommendation of the Museum Commission member reappointments. Someone prepared to make that motion? Counselor Tanner?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater reappoint David Hadley and Mike Williams to the Bridgewater Museum Commission, each for a three-year term effective immediately.
Thank you. Do I have a secondary? Counselor Thorburn? Any debate on that? No? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you to our incredible volunteers on these committees. 10.3 is recommendation of the Region 6 inter-municipal committee Ten point three is recommendation of the Region Six inter-municipal committee budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. That is there. I don't know if there's a specific update. Are you...
Nope, just if, if you don't have anyone, we have Counsel Thorburn here from Region Six, but if you wish to have a formal staff presentation, I'm sure that we could arrange that, but I believe the budget is fairly straightforward, and there's not a lot to change.
No, and, and we're only one of ten municipal units
That's right.
in our zone, and I think our rate is around nine-point-five-two percent of the budget, so like Tammy says, it's, it's not a big increase in our budget. And the payback to that's probably seven or eight dollars to every dollar we spend. I think that's correct, Tammy?
Uh...
The money we get from divert?
We have to confirm that.
It's something, it's something like that.
It's something like that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a good investment, really.
So just not to draw the subject on longer, but we've talked about Region Six now on two topics on this one. Can you just explain, so we're one of ten municipal unit, ten units, regions. Can you just explain quickly for the public, when you say Region Six, what is that? I was on the street and asked you, Counsel Thorburn, what is, you're a board member on Region Six, what is that?
To go, to go back a little bit, the province is broke up in six regions, and every municipality is a member of a particular region. Now, Region Six extends from Barrington, Posage, right up to Chester, and includes West Hanch, which gives us ten. And I am actually a chair of this, and I'm also, the chairs meet probably every seven to eight weeks nationally in Halifax to go over all the different things that's coming up. So it's quite important, and garbage is a big business, and a lot of players on divert, Nova Scotia's probably our biggest player, sustain is certainly being looked at, and, and when it come out, and it didn't come from solid waste that they was going to do something for pressure-treated wood. We wasn't involved, we wasn't part of the discussion, we were just told. We kind of left a little bit of taste in our mouth, because we was a player at the table and felt that they might have mentioned it to us. We did get a year or two kind of put things in place, but it takes effect, I think, July fifth, twenty-twenty-three, on a go-forward basis. And if anybody has any questions, I'll try and answer them.
So that oversees solid waste and recycling as well, right?
Right, yeah. The province is one of the few provinces that is consistent with that, and we are doing a program of extended producers responsibility, EPR, which we are working on that and hope to get that completed in the next couple of years, where we are going to actually charge the manufacturers for their plastics that they use and the paper packaging that's in their products, which would mean probably another, I'm going to say probably six to nine thousand dollars in the province of Nova Scotia, which will divert back to the municipal units. So it's, it's, instead of the regions paying for it now like we do, or the municipal units, the producers will pay for the waste that comes from their products.
And, and we're one of the last provinces to have this, correct?
Yes, yeah. Brundwick is, is ahead of us a little bit, but we're gaining ground on that, because we're ready for it. Okay.
Okay. So are there any questions in terms of the budget for Region Six? Hearing none, and someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fager?
Yes, I'll make motion, your worship, that county, that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of Region Six inter-municipal committee and approved the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Region Six budget in the total amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-nine dollars as presented in document twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-two.
Do I have a second, or Counsel Caldwell? We have a discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. You've got your building permit report for November twenty-twenty-two in there, so no surprise, we continue to be very busy, continue to grow. Any questions with that? You can reach out to staff through the CAO. We also have, at ten point five, we have Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program monthly report for December twenty-twenty-two. And again, also busy, which is, we wish they were less busy. So I would encourage the public to take a look at that, and it's actually quite eye-opening to see the needs that they serve. And now finally, in this section, we have ten point six, Parks and Recreation Culture Advisory Committee Youth Representative and Resident Appointments. Is someone prepared to make that motion, Counsel McDonald?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Ninthy Lilly Rutterhand to serve as the youth representative on Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee for a term effective immediately to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and that council appoint Araj Tarek to serve as the citizen representative on the Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee for the remainder of Lee Helmer's term, expire October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or Counsel Caldwell? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. We're down to Business arising, unfinished business, eleven point one, amendments to policy seventy-seven, grants to organizations for tiny shelters.
I would like to, excuse me, recuse myself from this discussion, as I have a family member who could benefit financially.
Thank you very much, Counsel Caldwell.
So we gave notice?
We gave notice, yeah.
To this on December twelfth?
And it's a very simple amendment, so council was advised that the District of Lunenburg had passed a motion to essentially match the town, the town's grant contributions towards tiny shelters. So it would increase the grant amount if we were to award a grant. The one for a thousand dollars for a single season would increase to two thousand, and the grant for three thousand for three or more seasons would increase to six thousand. So Mike has prepared a report that essentially outlines that, and the amendments are really quite straightforward, that for this fiscal year, that would be the grant amount, that we would change it from a thousand to two thousand for the one season, and from three thousand to six thousand. And that's based on the District of Lunenburg matching our grant amount.
Okay. Any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward. I'm going to say a huge thank you to the municipality District of Lunenburg. You know, this was, was not prompted. This is just them coming to the town and saying, we understand you're doing this, and we would like to be a part of that. So I really appreciate their, their contribution to this, and it will have an impact. So I just wanted the public to be aware that, that's, it's very big and very generous of them, so. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Thorburn?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve amended grants to organizations policy to increase the tiny shelter grants amount as presented in document twelve-dash-one-seven-eight-C as policy seventy-seven for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Welcome back, Counsel Caldwell. As we move to eleven point two, grants to organizations, partial rescinding, and again, this was, we gave notice at the last council meeting for this.
Yes, it's really a housekeeping issue where council had received a request for the twenty-twenty-two Para Hockey Cup, and we'd actually received it pre-COVID, and then everything kind of came to a halt, and that was reconsidered by council, I believe, in September, and a motion was made to award that grant. Subsequent to that, it also made its way to the grant committee's report and got awarded again. And we really only won one award on the books. Staff were able to catch it at the check-run stage, and so they've only been awarded the five thousand, but we should just clean up the motions so as to ensure that anyone looking back in history can see that we only did that once. Yeah, and gave the five thousand once. So it's a partial rescinding of the motion that you made on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two to essentially remove the text from the motion, five thousand dollars dash Canadian Tire Para Hockey Cup.
So I'm prepared to make that motion? Counsel Caldwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater partially rescind motion twenty-two-dash-two-five-seven, which was approved on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, by removing five thousand dollars Canadian Tire Para Hockey Cup. It is a duplication of motion twenty-two-dash-two-two-four, approved on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Coglan. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. We're down to our last item, which is eleven point three, police reserve business case. So council will recall, we had a discussion with some board police commission members and the chief on this. Director of Finance will walk us through this one.
All right. So back in the fall, when council reviewed the list of operating and capital reserves that we actually have, or sorry, in May, council reviewed the list of operating and capital reserves that we had and approved that list. At that time, we did, probably had a bit of a weaker explanation or purpose for the police reserve. It actually just refers to police operating and capital needs. So that's been discussed through kind of budgeting processes and so on, as to having a stronger definition and purpose for that. And as part of our operating and capital reserve policies that we brought in, we actually require a business case to be submitted for any reserves that are established. So in this case, we actually prepared a new business case form for the reserve that already exists to change the wording so that the primary purpose of the police reserve will be to accumulate funds to be used for future police building replacement. But we also have under the application of funds that from time to time, council can approve to use the police reserve for other capital or operating purposes through the annual budget process, or if something comes up in between budgets, council could also make a resolution between budgets to approve an expenditure from that police reserve. So it establishes the primary purpose, but also permits alternate use where council may choose to use that reserve for something else police-related. If that makes sense? Just...
Does. Counsel Thorburn, yes?
Yeah, thank you for that. So really, if they're going to take money out of the reserve, that would be part of a capital budget discussion normally, prior to approving the capital budget?
Yes, if there, if there's a recommendation from the police commission
Right, yeah.
to use those funds, or a recommendation from council to use the police reserve funds for something in the town's capital budget related to police, that it could, would go through the budgeting process as a whole, or if an emergency came up and a vehicle needed to be replaced, like we had this year, technically, it would permit a resolution outside of the budget to use those funds as well. Not to say it would be used for a police vehicle, just a, that's an instance where something comes up in between budgets.
So normally, it'd be part of a budget deliberation.
Yes.
But if something come up, then we deal with it with a motion of council, because that, this letter gives us the mission to do that, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
For me, it addressed the, the two issues. Our issue was ensuring that funds are being set aside for a future building, and addressed the police commission's concerns that if something did come up, they wanted to be able to potentially access that, but also the checks and balances of it coming through council are there. So I think that, that was one of the points that council made around there. Any other comments or questions on that?
Make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the establishment of a police reserve business case as presented in document twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-nine dated January ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Thorburn. All those in favor?
Right.
Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. We are at the end of our meeting. We have an in-camera meeting, so it falls under twenty-two-two-G, legal advice eligible for solicitor client privilege under the MGA. I would further ado, have a motion to adjourn, please. Counsel Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.